All right, I will call this regularly scheduled meeting to order if you will join in the salute to our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Do a roll call on declaration of conflicts of interest. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Abram?
Here and none.
Councilmember Bixel?
Here and none.
Councilmember Phillips?
Here and none.
And Mayor Booblaq?
Here and none. Approval agenda as posted or amended?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes, passes 4-0. All right, presentation, active military banner retirement recognition. Ms. Packwood? And Mr. Vargas?
All right, good evening. I am Karen Packwood, the Deputy Municipal Services Director, and this is Juan Vargas, here at Recreation Superintendent. I have the honor tonight to- Present our 2023-24 Active Military Banner Program participants. A little history on our program. The Active Military Banner Program was established in September 2017 as a way to honor the men and women currently serving our country. These are the service members of the United States Military who should know that their hometown supports them and thanks them daily for their service. Banner terms are one year, and they are on display on Countryside Drive from Veterans' Day to the following Veterans' Day. To date, this program has honored and displayed 178 local active military servicemen and women, which we are very proud of. I want to express our sincerest appreciation to Firehouse Dispensary, who sponsored this program term. And what does that mean? That means our 21 banners that were on display, families didn't have to pay a dime for those banners to be on display. So we are greatly appreciative of Firehouse Dispensary. Tonight, we are here to recognize 21 community members that were on display for this term. Unfortunately, only a handful of individuals and family members were able to attend tonight to accept the retired banners. However, I feel that it's necessary and very important to recognize all of our servicemen and women that were on display this past year. Our first active military member is Jared Chuning, who represents the United States Marine Corps. We have Marcus Robinson, who represents the United States Army. We have Drake Malapard, who represents the United States Navy. And with us tonight, we have Kelly Quelo, who represents the United States Army. If you can come on up, Kelly, and any family that's with you. Justin Yoniques, who represents the United States Navy. Alora Lucero, representing United States Navy. And another United States Navy, William Ladine, whose parents are in attendance tonight to accept on his behalf. Our one and only U.S. Air Force, actually, I'm wrong, I'm wrong, U.S. Army Jamie Stroop Kalwinowski. And our only U.S. Air Force, we have Thomas Hustlestein. Here with us tonight, who represent Brent Kurial as part of the United States Army as his family. And also with the United States Army, we have Matthew Fargo, whose family's in attendance. Isaac Perez, with the United States Navy. Andrew Wertherne, with the United States Navy. Ashley Bay, United States Navy. Representing the United States Marine Corps, is Alex Bradley's family. The United States Marine Corps, Nathan Screen. Family in attendance?
His grandmother is friendly.
Well, come on up, Ryan. United States Navy Jacob Moss. United States Army David Sandoval. United States Marine Corps Alan Sinchium. And our 21st Active Military Banner participant this year with the U.S. Navy is Mason Jamison, and his family is in attendance tonight. And another? And another? Oh. David Sandoval's here. Oh. amazing program. If you have not seen these banners on display, I encourage you to travel down countryside to see just a few of the very many people representing our community, serving our country. So thank you again. And Alan and David, thank you again for being in attendance.
All right, now Councilmember Abram is going to handle the presentation from Fresno State Parent University.
All right, well, good evening. The City of Turlock is a proud partner with Fresno State to bring programs to residents of all ages through the Parent University. This is a program that offers no-cost virtual training classes that are designed to empower and support our community. Courses include things like digital literacy, financial literacy, parenting skills, pathways to college, health and wellness, small business development, social emotional learning, and English and Spanish conversation. These are four-week courses that are held twice a week on Zoom for two hours each, and at the end of each course, participants receive a certificate of completion from Fresno State. In October and November, sessions were held and 51 certificates were achieved. February sessions started last week with 180 registrants from the City of Turlock, and March session is open for registration now, and I'm sure our social media has all the different ways that you can access that. Tonight, we have some participants who have achieved certificates from the past sessions. So if anyone is here who has done that, please feel free to come, join me up here. Do we have certificates? They have their certificates.
Come on up.
Come on up. We will be happy to recognize you for those.
Anybody else besides this young lady as well?
So yes, if you want to come up here.
Now is the time for public participation. This is a three-minute set aside. You will see an indicator there and here, and we adhere to a very strict three minutes. It has to be an item of interest to the public that is not, that it has to be within our subject matter, and so we will, I have only two cards at this moment, so if there's an item that you're going to speak on that is on the agenda besides this public comment, we'll ask you to hang on and do it later. I have older child of God.
Father in heaven, give me the words I need to bring this story forward. If it be thy will, in Jesus' name, amen. Turlock Medical Clinic became Sutter Gould. So I'm trying to get 70 years in three minutes here. So when I was a child, back in my parents' 49 car Chevrolet, I was going down north of E Road and looked across the field and see these people walking down the road, and I asked my mom, what are they doing? She says, they're going to church. Oh. So about 15 years later, I'm marrying somebody in that church, and find out my doctor goes to that church. No big deal. But you have a bond with your doctor, your general practitioner, after a while, you know. So I've got a bond with the, well, I knew the doctor before he was my doctor. Now I've got like 300 years of family history with this one doctor, and I go through, I do my Medicare, I sign up for my B. They tell you, sign up at the end of the year for your B plan, you know, in October, November thing. So when I called to sign up, they said, no, it's January. So I go, oh, last January, or 11 months ago. And they go, no, next. So I lost a year there. So I go in to make my appointment, and they go, you're not a patient here anymore, you're considered a new patient because you haven't been in since the pandemic and some arbitrary time they added. I think they said three years, I wasn't sure. My thing is, that's a policy, but they have an oath for first do no harm for the doctors. So I go in, try to make an appointment, because I'm at the stage in my life now that I need to see someone. So I'm sorry. So we have a policy that they're enforcing from somewhere. Because when I was at, when I was at Turlock Medical Clinic, I was a patient there, and Sutter Gould, Gould came to me and asked the patients there if they wanted to be part of that group, which is different than me going into them. I tried to explain that to them when I talked to them, but they don't seem to care. My aunt, who was 94 at the time of the pandemic, I was taking her to the clinic during the pandemic, she has the same doctor I do. So their thing was, I hadn't been in, so I asked, I go, so if I would have come with my aunt, everything would have been good? And they didn't give me an answer, because that's their answer. They didn't get their $200 for the visit to see me, is the thing. So I'm down between them and their policy of me not being a patient when they have my, my uncle, godfather, my mother, my sister, and my aunt, who just died October 7th at 100 years and 51 weeks, we all had the same doctor. So I don't understand where their Sutter family practices. So their policy is just arbitrary, in my opinion. Thanks for listening, God bless.
Just for future reservation-
Oh, sorry. My name is Mike Roy-Baptista.
That's okay.
I forgot that last name, too.
Mr. Baptista, it would be a state or federal issue, we don't have a jurisdiction-
No, I understand, I'm just-
Understood.
I'm venting because they won't listen, so I'll put it out there on public record.
Tom Clark, come on up. Tell us we've done one right, one signal right, come on.
How'd you know? I read. My name's Tom Clark, I'm here to talk about traffic signals and maybe challenge one of our council members or even mayor to put this on their hit list to get themselves re-elected and possibly change our traffic patterns in Turlock for the better. I have two signals for you to look at. One, I emailed today about, and I did get a response from the city that they will put a work order in. But my whole point is, we have modern technology in the ground, the sensors. Some people don't know about them, and they sit in front of them when they're trying to turn left, and they sit, sit, sit until somebody comes behind them. But they're in the ground, and they're set on some sort of timer, okay? Berkeley and Montavista is my point of interest. See the shake of the head? Thanks. For example, if you're turning, if you're heading north and turning left to go west on Montavista, it's set for 10 seconds. Sensors don't do anything. If you're the fifth car there, you're stuck there, okay? And then all of a sudden, east-west Montavista traffic is going for over a minute, whether cars are going there or not. Different times of the day actually go differently and changes, but we have school traffic going 7:30 and/or 7:15, 7 o'clock, 8:15. If you were to actually go to that intersection, you will see 10 to 15 cars, both directions, heading north and south, trying to get to Pittman, trying to get to Turlock, because Montavista is set for a traffic pattern to ease whatever, and no cars will be going, or one car every 10 seconds. Kroll is the other one. They changed the traffic signal at Kroll and Christopherson. So now the eastbound to southbound, eastbound Christopherson to southbound is set on a timer, which is great at 10:05 after All Saints gets out of mass and everybody's trying to make a U-turn. But the other 23 hours and 55 minutes of the day, it makes no sense. If you're heading east on Christopherson at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, that turn signal's going to be on for 25 seconds. So I'd just like to challenge you guys to not only look at those two, but maybe observe, I mean, we have sensors in the ground. We can do this, and guess what? Everybody gets to save gas. Your constituents would save gas. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else who did not fill out a card for public comment?
Good evening, council staff and all those in attendance, Milt Treeweiler. The city, state, country, and world conditions are constantly changing. This is just a matter of fact and reality.
Just one second, please. Ma'am, can, can we have the conversation outside, or, because he's speaking now, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Milt.
This is just a matter of reality, yet there are people who need to wake up to reality. Here are a few things I meant to, I want to address. At the last council meeting during the economic development Zoom portion, many outdated and incorrect statements were made. One of these was that telecommuting is now common. This is false. Government and private industry employees are now being required to return to their office again. It was the pandemic that forced people to telecommunicate. The pandemic is over. The primary housing we should be focusing on today in our city area is most should be high-rise condominiums, multi-story townhouses, three-to-four-story apartment complexes. In Stanislaus County, housing results in destruction, the best farmland in the world. We're responsible to see that our children and our descendants have affordable food to eat. Second, the laws of physics and mathematics are the guideline we are governed by. You can break a commandment or a law, but you cannot ignore the laws of physics or mathematics. Two and two will always be four, and the laws of physics that states two solid objects cannot occupy the same space at the same time will always apply. A jetliner chopper that collided with the Potomac River, over the Potomac River, is a sad reminder of this reality. Number three, I have a question. Where are the students from Stanislaus State that were attending our council meetings? You can learn a lot about government by attending our city council meetings. All city residents should try to attend these meetings and let their voice be heard. Number four, we need a navigation center that was proposed at the January 14th meeting. This was something that was very important for District 2. The City of Turlock and Gospel Mission had found a compromise for the rehabilitation of the building at 432 South Broadway. This building will provide necessary services for our homeless residents on the West Side. We need to treat everyone like we would like them to treat us. Let's make sure that every one of our residents are treated with dignity and respect. Finally, my comment on the financing of city projects is that it seems to me the city is budgeting more money for cannabis funds, from cannabis funds than the city is receiving in cannabis funds. That's not going to work, and sounds problematic. Remember, over $5 million of the cannabis funds are going for the completion of the Columbia Pool on the West Side. At the last meeting, you just budgeted another $500-plus thousand dollars for cannabis, from cannabis funds for 13 camera systems. This sounds like a mistake to me. You can't pull the wool over the people's eyes forever. We need to be planning for our next generation. Thank you.
Good evening. A lot of things seemed to happen in, in February. Four years ago, the council member handbook that was adopted in May of 2019, you know where I'm going, four years ago, it was rescinded, and a promise, kind of a promise was made at that time to redo that handbook, and so far, only one segment has been done, the public participation segment. So one of the questions that I have is, are there any plans of completing the council member handbook and any potential date that that might happen? Also, one year ago, we had that very large meeting concerning the mental health facility at 1617 Colorado, and we found out the hard way that we had holes in our ordinances that the Alamo Health was able to exploit, and that it wasn't unique to Turlock. So we were going to update those ordinances. So I'm wondering if maybe we need to allocate some more fun, funds to the city attorney's office, all one of him, so that he can get the backlog and some of this critical work done. Another question I have is, when will Columbia Pool be open? And like I asked before, if we can get an explanation for the one-year delay in its opening. And then, back in 2019, 2020, and I think 2021, I heard about the audit for the assessment districts, and I don't know if that was ever done. Has it been completed? And there is also talk about an effort to combine those 200-plus assessment districts into one, which, or into a smaller number than 200, which sounded like a wise thing to do, and also to discuss the possibility of creating another assessment district for the rest of Turlock, so we wouldn't run into the same situation that we had before with our roads, to where a third of them are being maintained on a regular basis and the other third are not being maintained. So I have a question of what's going on with that effort. So I also filled these out using the yellow cards, because you said if we filled them out, we would actually get answers.
Ah, did I say that?
So thank you.
I didn't even know we had color coordination. Okay. Anyone else who wanted to speak for public comment?
I just had a question. There's an apartment complex sitting in Limbo at North Walnut and Montavista, and I'd just kind of like to know the status of that project, and also how long their permits are good for. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I don't know whether, I don't know, my name's Wallene Beederman, I live in Springcrest, Philly.
That's going to come up in a couple minutes.
Okay, that was my question. Now or later?
Later, please, ma'am. Anybody else for just public comment?
Hi, Ryan Taylor. It's good to be back, but I just want to say thank you for the banner program. My buddy Nathan, I just got one, and it was a great reminder to see him every time I go to In-N-Out or something and see his banner there, and you know, it's just, I really like it, so keep it up, keep up the good work, keep on sponsoring it and encouraging people to apply for it. Anyway, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we are going to close public comment and bring it back for consent calendar. So Will?
Move to your per.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes, passes 4-0. Thank you for that. Final readings, there are none. Public hearing, we have an item that Ms. Warner will start.
Good evening, council members, and Mayor Booblaq, and members of the public. And the item before you tonight is a general plan amendment and a rezone of a property at the corner, the northwest corner of Montavista and Walnut and Four Seasons. The, there's two properties. One property is approximately nine acres, that is zone community commercial, which is for commercial use, and then the smaller piece, that's a little over three acres, that's zone for medium-density residential. What the proposal is tonight is to have a general plan amendment for the commercial piece to plan that for residential, so it needs a general plan amendment as well as a rezone to take the underlying general plan designation from commercial to residential. What it's going to, with Bright Development as the applicant for the project, what they are proposing is to subdivide the 13 acres into approximately 114 single-family homes. Lot, there's a lot in the center of the property that's zone, that is Lot A, and that will be an open space, also as retention for their water. What is proposed is to develop both properties to the density for the medium-density residential, which would allow seven to 15 units to the acre based on our zoning ordinance. So this is a map of what the zoning is currently, and as you can see, around the subdivision, the proposed subdivision where it says PD 186, that's Montavista, it's Montavista Village, Springcrest, Winter Haven. It is a subdivision of residence, of different densities and residential. And then to the north, about a half, about a quarter of a mile or over a quarter of a mile is Turlock Junior High. And the properties to the south are zone low-density residential, and the property to the east, which says RH, is high-density residential. That property is where- That property is where a approximately 300-unit apartment complex is proposed. And it, Mr. Brightbloom brought that up. I can, if I can address that now. That was approved by, by staff a couple of years ago. They do have their building permits in. At this point in time, it's up to the developer on their, on their construction, but their building permits do have, they have approximately about 90 days to notify us where, where they're going with that. So, just to kind of address that point. But as you can see, the, the larger piece is zone community commercial. It also has a general plan designation of commercial. What is proposed is to develop both properties at a, what our medium density is, which is, I believe they said, seven to 15 units to the acre. Based on their proposal of 114 units, they're at eight units to the acre. So, they are right in that density range that we would be, be looking at for that type of development. So, just a little bit of background. In 1991, the city council approved a pre-zone, pre-zoning 87 acres to Plan Development 186. And what a pre-zone is, is the, the property is not annexed into the city yet, and what we're looking at is how we're going to utilize those properties as we bring them into the city. So, what was proposed in that pre-zone at that, at that point in time was a variety, a mixture of uses of residences, of lot sizes, different types of homes, and also, commercial use. And the commercial component of the property has always been designated as this property that we're talking about tonight. But PD 186 was proposed to be developed in, into, in phases. So, this is a, a table of what the proposed subdivisions were. So, in 1997, Montavista Village was proposed for 100 lots. And that was approved in 97, and over the course of the next five to six years, the planning commission and city council approved another four subdivisions. So, those subdivisions have been built out over the past 20-plus years, except for the commercial component, which is at the corner that we're talking about tonight. So, in, in evaluating any type of project, staff always has to look at the general plan as well as our zoning ordinance. And our general plan encourages infill, which is, this is considered an infill site. It's within the city limits, it's been zoned, we know what the zoning is. And so, what it, what it wants us to do is look at those properties within our city limits to develop. And as you can see, the, one of the general plan policies talks about infill projects and approving single-family homes at a, at lower densities or a variety of densities. General Plan Policy 2.5 also wants us to look at including small-lot, single-family homes, townhouses, apartments, and condominiums. So, this project would be considered, we would look at as a small-lot, single-family home subdivision. So, other parts of the general plan talks about allowing different densities, and that means that the concentration of number of homes in the area. So, considering this property as well as the other properties in the other subdivisions, they are at different densities. So, it, so the Bright Homes has requested a plan development, and a plan development is, it helps us, what they're asking for is deviations from the standards of our, of our medium-density residential standards. So, they're requesting smaller lot sizes, some deviations from the setbacks and those type of things. The plan development is very specific and, and really kind of looks to that to allow a property that we would like to see develop, maybe have some flexibility in, in to get a development that would, that we would encourage through our general plan. And understanding that those, some of those deviations may conflict with the general plan, but it also, what the general plan is saying, we need to be flexible in what we're looking at and the development that's coming forward to us. So, the, one of the things with the plan development, it also encourages a mix and variety in neighborhoods. One of the deviations that, that Bright Development is requesting in the plan development is, is the lot size. So, the medium-density residential lot size for what is typical, a small, the minimum would be 6,000 square feet. These lots are proposed anywhere from 3,000, 3,100 to 5,400 square feet. So, in, in the RM zoning district, the lot width is 60 feet, and they're averaging at about 45. And the depth is 100 feet, and the average is about 70. There, the majority of them, there are, meet that 45 width. There are some that are on corner lots that are reduced, but that's because they're on corner lots, and you know, you take out part of that, that land, that width for... One of the things that we do look at in the RM zoning district, because typically, multifamily apartments can be built in our RM zoning district, but so can single-family homes. So, when we're building single-family homes, we're still looking at the density, but we also, in our zoning ordinance, allow the homes, because they are single-family homes, to really kind of mimic what our RL zoning district is. And the RL zoning district is what you would see, which would be a standard 5,000 square foot lot come with these setbacks. And as you can see, the front yard setbacks are 15 feet, the side yard setbacks are five, the corner sides are 15, and the rear are 10. So, even as the proposed PD, it's not that different from what we would see in a single-family residential subdivision. That's not, not deviating from any of the regulations. So, this is a lot, the lot standards and the layout that Bright is proposing. I just circled what their development standards are, just to kind of give you a visual of what I just kind of spoke and went over. As it was proposed, the streets for, the internal streets of the subdivision don't meet our city standards for local streets. So, they are much narrower, and because of that, they are private streets. So, they will be maintained through an HOA in the subdivision. There are, as proposed when we went to the planning commission, there was one entrance that was proposed off of Snowbird as their main entrance with an emergency vehicle access on Four Seasons Drive. Through the discussion during the planning commission and some residents that came out, they were concerned with only one entry point, one main entry point coming out on to Snowbird. So, through discussion with their city engineer and Bright Development, and taking into consideration what the residents were saying, that they did modify the emergency vehicle access off of Four Seasons into a secondary entrance. So, there are two entrances now that residents can access into the subdivision, one from Four Seasons and one from Snowbird. Along with that, just to kind of back up a little bit, there was some discussion and some concern that people parking, that the houses that are fronting onto Snowbird, people would be wanting to park on the street. So, again, Bright Development and the city engineer, taking that into consideration, have widened the street a little bit to allow for a parking lane in front of those homes there. Those homes along Snowbird do not have driveways onto, that will be backing into Snowbird. They will have their, their houses front onto Snowbird, so their front doors will face Snowbird. All of the access for all of the homes, and we can go back a little bit, are through the entry from Four Seasons or from Snowbird, and then, they're accessed through private alleyways that will access their garages from the alleyway. So, no driveways are coming out onto Snowbird or onto Four Seasons. So, part of the, part of the analysis that staff has to do is when we're going to situate, we would consider what is called sensitive receptors, or people, where people are going to be living, sleeping, you know, hotels, hospitals, convalescent homes, subdivisions. We have to look at any kind of noise impacts. And there is a chart in our, in your staff report, as well as in the general plan, that shows noise contours. So, what we have to look at is what the amount of noise is going to be projected over the course of time, of the, of the life of our general plan. And our general plan is a document that spans, we adopted it in 2012, and it goes to 2030. So, general plans usually go anywhere from 20 to 30 years. And it, it's the document that the city has said, this is how we want to grow, this is the way we want to grow, and this is how we're going to do it. And along with that general plan are numerous studies, noise studies, traffic studies, circulation studies, air quality, that all have to be prepared as part of that to make sure that we are doing, that we're taking care of ourselves and developing in the correct way. So, part of that is the noise analysis and noise study. This property is in what's the noise contour, so it has to be, acceptable levels have to be for the, the people that will be living there. So, part of that noise study, they identified that the, they will need a sound wall, so a wall that will mitigate the noise that would be coming from Montavista and Walnut and Four Seasons. So, along the Walnut roadside, they're proposing that, that, they were saying that an eight-foot wall needs to be constructed along Walnut as well as Montavista, and a six-foot sound wall along Four Seasons. So, those, that has been implemented. That's one of the conditions that, that they will have to do as far as helping to mitigate the noise that's going to impact the residents in that neighborhood. So, the other, the, another study that was done was a traffic study, and that traffic study was prepared because the, the analysis that was done as part of the general plan looked at the properties as commercial and residential. So, the, any, the circulation pattern that we have now was, was looking at that property of, of just developing as commercial, not as a residential. So, the traffic study analyzed that based on what the traffic engineer, and I believe we have him on the phone too, if anyone has any questions and some later date, based on the traffic engineer, they anticipated that the development of the 13 acres would generate approximately 1,138 weekday vehicle trips. And we talked about vehicle miles traveled. And so, out of those 114 homes, people leaving, going to work, coming back to work, going shopping, they, the methodology, and, and they've estimated that are going to generate approximately 1,138 homes. What I, what we also have to do is, what I prepared is the analysis that if we were to develop the property as is now with the medium density on the three acres, and then, nine acres of commercial, which we could, nine acres of commercial could feasibly handle about 100,000 square feet of retail space, not necessarily 100,000 square foot building, but, you know, multiple buildings, buildings that could handle that much retail space. So, you know, a large, small, neighborhood shopping center or something like that. Based on that, the, the, the commercial piece would generate 3,775 average vehicle miles traveled, weekday trips, and the medium density would do an average of 311. So, if you added that, if it was to develop the way that it zones now, you would have over 4,000 trips that would be a day that would be allocated for those two pieces of property, compared to the 1,100 if we're just analyzing just as the residential. So, this is just the elevations of the, of the homes. So, you can see they are, they are proposing four different elevations. They will be two-story homes. The homes, again, on Snowbird are facing the other homes that are on Snowbird, so no one's going to see the back of their houses. So, we had some public comments. There were quite a few neighbors that were, that expressed concern and came to the meeting in writing. You have their comments in the packet, but they're, they're big, they're, some of their issues were the increase in traffic. And we were able to demonstrate straight through the traffic study and our evaluation that developing the residential portion, developing residential versus commercial is actually a reduction in, in vehicle trips. They also were concerned with that single entry point. And during the meeting, Bright Development and the city engineer agreed that they would modify the plan to take that emergency vehicle access and make that an additional entry point. So, that was, that was done at the meeting in discussion with the neighbors and in hearing their concerns. And the small lots, they were concerned with the small lots and the closeness of the homes. We do have other examples of small-lot subdivisions in the city. It's not unusual to have smaller lots. We just, about two years ago, approved the Fifth Street community that has small lots. Those lots, some of those lots are even smaller than these. They also have private roads because their roads are smaller as well. So, it's not, it's not an unusual thing for us to develop smaller lots. It, it fits in with what our general plan is asking us to do, as well as do, as well as, you know, being able to do an infill project on, and, and meet those, still kind of meet our standards in our general plan policies. And the narrow streets, as they're proposed, the interior streets are private streets, but they will still meet the minimum standards to meet our fire department requirements. And we have similar examples like Legend subdivision, the Cottage Park subdivision, which is off of Tuolumne, and most recently, our Fifth Street community. I'll have to, I can answer any questions if anybody has any.
Questions?
Yes, you already articulated kind of two of the changes that were brought forth and made, you know, with city staff and Bright developers. The, the parking lane on Snowbird, the permanent In-N-Out on Four Seasons, but there were some other things to address, some concerns, maybe a stop sign and the changes on, what is that, Four Seasons as it relates to Montavista. Could you articulate those, please?
So, thank you. And the, there was some concern also with the existing, with the traffic that's going down there now, people speeding down Snowbird. So, Four Seasons, the Bright Development and the traffic engineer have decided that we can make the Snowbird, and I believe it's Snow Mass intersection right that the entrances intersect, that would be a four-way stop. One of the things with the traffic study, when the traffic study was done with the pre-zone back in 91, it was looking at the property as commercial. So, the property was as commercial, if it was to develop a commercial, then the traffic study said that they needed to put in a stoplight at Montavista and Four Seasons. So, this current traffic study analyzed that too, and because it's not developing with that commercial, the, the traffic study says that at this point, the traffic light is not warranted. What will happen, the median along, and will be extended in Montavista. So, coming east, if I'm coming from the freeway, the, that you will be able to turn left into the subdivision onto Four Seasons, and you will be able to come out of Four Seasons and turn right. What you won't be able to do anymore is be able to cross traffic on Montavista and go east. So, that is, that's, that's going to be a change as well. But that's borne out in the traffic study as well. And Montavista in the general plan has always been proposed to have a median down there, and that's what, we're extending that there. But the, the city engineer did, did concede that, you know, having that turn lane would be helpful for people turning into Four Seasons, so.
And one other question, could you go back to the, the diagram that has, shows like where the houses are a little bit bigger? A little bit bigger, yeah. One of the things that, in reading the public comments, was, it seemed like the concern of, you know, people needing to get out in an extremely emergent situation. And it was news to me when we were talking earlier that in all of those alleyways, there is an exit point if someone really needs to leave this space. Can you clarify that?
Yes, there's the, it's, you can't drive a vehicle through that space, but you can walk, they will be walkable out, you can walk in and out of the spaces.
So, brakes and the sound wall for like a man gate kind of thing?
Right, correct.
And again, you said that there will be, if you're coming east, like say, from the freeway, you can make a left-hand turn into the subdivision?
Yes.
Correct. But you cannot come out of the subdivision and make a left-hand turn?
Correct.
Okay.
So, you'd be forced to...
So you'd be forced to which street?
So if you're coming out of Four Seasons, you'll have to go west on Montevista or you will go up, I believe to Winter Haven and you'll come around and come down Walnut. And then at, at Walnut where there's a signal there, you can turn left.
So you spoke of the, the traffic engineering and whether it was to be a stop sign or stoplight. Who incurs that expense?
That would be the developer.
Okay. You guys have any other questions? All right, let's have the developer come up first, if you'd like. And for the record, anybody who is asking questions, our director will be writing the questions down, so you'll have your three minutes to speak. Obviously, this doesn't happen to you. And then we'll answer them after we close the public comment, but welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. My name is Laura Erickson. I'm the chief operating officer for Bright Development. I have here with me also our director of development and forward planning, Dave Butts, our counsel Dana Kennedy from Miller Star, as well as Heron Sangera from GDR Engineering Group. First off, thank you so much for your time and thank you so much to Director Warner for all her hard work and excellent presentation tonight. As was noted in the planning commission hearing, there was a lot of concern, I think, from the public. I think that we stepped up to the plate here and came up with a resolution that should meet most of the concerns that were raised. We do feel like this is a great addition to the city of Turlock. We're really proud of the communities that exist in that area because we built them very proudly. Bright has been members of this community for over 50 years and we're excited to bring another unique community here that we really think will be of benefit to the city. Because Director Warner made such an excellent case, I'll keep this very high level, but I'm definitely here and available to answer any questions or concerns that may arise.
So should this pass, the first year, would you bring some strawberries to everybody?
That's one thing that's very important to note. The strawberries will be available in Modesto, but I'm sure we can drive them here to you if you'd like.
All right, we're going to go ahead and let you have a seat and unless any of your other people with you wanted to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay, well, we'll give you an opportunity at the end. All right, so you can have one chance to come up, three minutes, and ask your question and make your statement. Go ahead, please.
Again, my name's Wallene Beederman and I live, I live in Spring Crest Village. I was here during the planning commission meeting and the opening going on to Four Seasons was like a hail Mary pass. At the very end, they said, well, we can do it. Okay, already we have congestion going. If you could drive up, we've got 300 homes in our development and the only way you can get to those homes is going down Four Seasons. So in order to get there, you have to drive up Montevista and wait for two lanes of traffic to go by you. And then finally you get to go in. In the meantime, people are backing up in the back. The last people are in the, in the left lane going through because they are still waiting their turn to go in. And now you're asking to add, I would say 300 more cars because you've got 100 homes, there's four bedrooms, you've got a mommy and a daddy and a teenager, that's 300 cars. You're going to add that to this mess that we already have getting into our village. It's the only way we can get in. We cannot go up and go around Walnut. We cannot go into the village because it's blocked off. We are at a standstill already. And when I heard the traffic and, you know, we've had all these traffic reviews, well, you should have sat there and looked at how long it took for the cars to finally wait for two cars to pass so they could get in. So I'm asking you to just not approve the, the exit onto Four Seasons. It, it is better, you know, they said they didn't want to bring anything out onto Montevista, but we have other properties that actually exit. And it would be very safe there because they have a continual lane. They could sit there in the continual left turn lane and finally go into their entrance and exit on Montevista. Thank you. Is my council member here today?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. Then you know the problem.
I live in your district too, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Puffer?
I want my grocery store, so just know that I'm prejudiced toward this project anyway. On the traffic study, I really have not had a chance to look at it, nor do I even know if it's available. And it's irrelevant now because you guys are going to do something tonight. There's no chance you'll ever sit there and say, well, let's pass it on to the next meeting, no matter what I say. But I would have thought that the best traffic study would have been to go down to Village Market and just take the traffic out of that commercial venture because it's about the same size as, as this property here. And I think it would have given you a pretty good idea of what the real traffic going into that grocery store, whatever we were going to put there would have been. This isn't going to work unless you find some way to get Snowbird connected to Walnut. And you could, you're going to have to take that last little bit and put an entrance into Walnut. And at least that way, people have a choice. They can come in on Montevista and turn into Four Seasons, or they can go down to the light, go into Walnut and take a left in there because it is not blocked, that, that road would not be blocked. And you'd have to fiddle around with that. But that's the only way you're going to handle 114 new homes' traffic in that situation. And then people coming out on Walnut can duke it out with the people coming out of the, um, come on, guys, senior moment here. Well, whatever those apartments are going to be called, they can all duke it out to how they're going to do that. But you already have an entrance off of Walnut going into those apartments. I don't see why you can't add another entrance into Snowbird or what it is. Now, it's going to kill people in Snowbird because now their road's going to be a lot busier, but that's the only way you're going to, you know.
I too attended that meeting last Thursday. It was a very good meeting. It was a two-hour meeting. So people, every citizen who wanted to speak, every resident who wanted to speak had an opportunity to speak. And they did speak. And it was so professionally handled, handled by our staff and by Bright Development because they did answer the questions and they did give you the solutions that would solve the problem. If you think that there isn't any street in Turlock that doesn't have some kind of a traffic jam sometime during the day, look again. I mean, there are some, obviously, but very few. One of the things, primary things we need in our city is housing. And these are beautiful houses. We have several other subdivisions just like this. Two of them are on Twalomee, one of them's on Countryside, the one that was just mentioned on Fifth Street. This is nothing unusual. There are four or five of these divisions already like this and everybody's getting along fine. I mean, there's an adjustment period with everything. Remember what I just said at the beginning? Changes are taking place in your city, your state, your country, the world, all the time. You adapt to those changes. I mean, we need housing. One of the primary things we need in Turlock, and actually every place, is housing. This is a beautiful housing project. The developer has it all figured out. The city has it all figured out. The fire department's happy with it, the police department's happy with it, the water department's happy with it. Everybody's happy with it. Well, most everybody's happy with it. Sorry, not everybody. Yeah, most everybody's happy with it. But you know, I'm complaining a lot about my street because I have traffic jams every single day, twice a day. And sometimes I have to sit there for five minutes, but you know what? It just, you get used to it. You've got to adjust. We need housing. We were told today by our federal chair that people are not even going to be able to afford housing in maybe 10 years from now. You will not be able to afford housing. We've got to get these houses built when we've got the opportunity. And we have the place and it's already planned out. It's ready to go. They'll have this done. We'll have another 115 houses in two years. We can't ask for anything better than that. So I, I just love this thing and I would like to see it go through because it's good for the city of Turlock. And I'm here for the city of Turlock. Everybody knows I was born here a long time ago and I, you know, whatever, you know about that. So it's a good project and we need it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Egon, Kelly, you're second. Hold on.
Alvinah, Roner, I don't know too much about development and so forth, but when you did the traffic, did you include the apartments that are supposed to be built on the other side of Walmart? I don't think you included that traffic. And the other part, I would like to see the commercial section developed because if we're talking about all this traffic, this commercial area would allow us to walk to the grocery store instead of driving, cutting down on this traffic that seems insurmountable at that area. But did you include the supposedly those apartments, 1,800 or something?
She'll respond at the end, she'll answer all these questions.
They did?
She will. After we're all done, she'll answer all these questions. So she's not going to answer you right now.
Right.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So I was just wondering if that was included.
We'll get that answered for sure, I promise. Kelly? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. The only concern, I, I think this is a great idea. I know we really need housing in Turlock, but I have a big concern about how small the lots are. Kids need to play. They've already gone through enough emotional distress through COVID and kids need a place to run, throw a ball, play basketball, you know, play chase and tag, you know, have swing sets and all that. And I see that that's a real problem, whether it's this project or, you know, homes that have been built in the past here in Turlock, that the lots are just too small. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ron, and then John.
Yeah, I, I gave them a presentation. A couple of questions. Number one, has any effort been made over time to find a commercial development for those lots? Okay. At the planning commission, it was stated that the original design was for the, the two entrances. And then if I remember correctly, in discussion with city staff, they changed the design back to just one entrance and now we're back to two entrances. One of my question is, why did they make the change from two to one? There was some logical thinking that was done there, okay? So would kind of like to know why they went from two to one. And then also I have a little bit of concern that second entrance is like 150 feet or something like that because I think those lots are 50 feet wide. So there's only 150 feet away from the other entrance. And I mean, that can, traffic churning, so on and so forth, at, at times, a lot of people coming out both exits, kind of, especially if one of them, the northern one is speeding down after they come out, that can cause some conflicts. Also, I looked at the traffic study and they talked about the VMT, the vehicle miles traveled, about how that's very important for guiding land, land use decisions like what you guys are, are making tonight. And that if you overestimate or underestimate the VMT, it can lead to flawed conclusions. And I looked at their traffic study that was included. And for that census tract where this development is, it stated in the traffic study that it's 8.4 VMT per capita. But that is about a third of the citywide average residential VMT, which is 22.6. And then they concluded by saying, the project is presumed to have a less significant VMT impact and thus no detailed analysis was conducted as part of the study. I really wondered what they assumed in terms of the VMT for that area. If they were assuming the lower number because we have a lot of dorms and students and seniors in that area, I don't think that would be valid for this development. Okay, so I really kind of questioned what they were assuming in the traffic study. And I want to say thank you for what you've done. You've done a good job.
John Gebeline, I, I just had two questions. The, the only thing that I saw on the inside, I assume that there's no on-street parking inside the development. And so how many cars can be parked at each in, uh, unit? As it is, there's, there's a garage there, I assume, but I mean, can you fit just two cars? Or is there a driveway where you can back to back? So, and so that would seem to me that if you have people visiting or again, you have more than two cars per unit, where are you going to put all that type of thing? And then the final question I had, is the developer going to do improvements to Montevista and things like? I mean, that, that street is horrible as it is, the paving and Walnut and I don't know that much about that, but hopefully that somehow there, since they're going to be putting this in, there's going to be more vehicle traffic, that somehow they're going to be paying something towards the improvement of those streets. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right, I will give the developer and any of your people, if you wish to speak one more time before I close the public comment, to close up the conversation.
Mayor Boob Black, we also have the city, the engineer who prepared the traffic study on the phone as well.
Perfect, okay, wonderful. No running in the house. We're going to tight you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you again for the opportunity to address some of these questions, which I know Director Warner will also address. I think the traffic study, just to give it some kind of timeline regarding the traffic study, the traffic engineers were engaged back in June of last year. We deliberately held off on having the traffic study counts conducted until after all school was in session on August 27th to ensure we had the most accurate count of what I think is, would be a high level of traffic. The, and this was done obviously at the request of the city. The traffic study, the noise study, everything was provided to the city in October, really thoroughly reviewed by staff and city engineering, which is how we came about with this current plan that we have. So we do feel that even though not today so much, but perhaps that planning commission were, when emotions kind of were running high, that the facts of the matter are, we've got an engineer who this is what they are, what they are doing. There's also some question of who the engineers are. They are a third-party engineer that we were hired at the request of the city. So I hope that answers some of the questions on the traffic study. I hear the concern about the lot sizes. I know that this isn't something that people are used to. I think as Director Warner had pointed out, this is actually a fairly common lot size and not only in developments here in the city of Turlock, but also in most cities around us. Because of the lack of space and lack of land, we're forced to get a little bit creative. And I know that it can sound a little scary, but we've actually done this exact same project in different cities. It lives great, it feels great, and there's always been a great response from the community that they're in. There is also a question about the street parking, which I hope I can answer. So for the homes that are built here, they will all be traditional two-car garages with driveways with parking available. There also will be street parking available on one side of the street within the subdivision. So we do believe that there will be ample parking to support the homes in that subdivision. And I will defer to staff to discuss the improvements to Montevista or any specific questions on the traffic studies. But again, I- questions on the traffic studies. But again, I appreciate the time that went into kind of working out what we think will be a really good project for the city of Turlock.
Thank you. All right, we will close public comment, and we'll bring it back for a myriad of questions. But let's start with the engineer, because there were a couple of questions. Did we consider the Walnut, other side of Walnut and Montevista, those type of things?
Okay, so, want to get Joy?
Joy, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
So, Joy, there was a question from the public on the, you know, any projects that were in the pipeline in the city, or did you take into account the project that was across the street as far as the traffic study, and what projects you were included in when you developed the traffic study?
Sure, yes. So, when, like, the entire, like, information is not available as to what the development is going to be and how much growth is going to happen. What we resolved to is the model, the transportation demand model that is created for each city. And that's why what we assumed is one-person growth. Typically, the growth in any city is from 0.5% to 1% every year. So just to be conservative, what we did was assume that there is going to be one-person growth of traffic. So we increased it for every year by 1% to do the cumulative analysis. And that way, we take care of all the background traffic growth that happens from different developments that is going to go in the city. So that's how the cumulative analysis already takes into account all the other developments within the city.
If you'll relay the question, do we arbitrarily go to some other location and do traffic study on that, such as over on Canal, to dissuade whether or not it's applicable?
Okay, so, the mayor's asked a question that, when you're looking at the traffic study for this property, do you go to other parts of town to see what the traffic is, like over there, to, like, if there's a shopping center on the other side of town? Do you look at that, the traffic in that area?
No, we typically focus on the area which is at the vicinity of the development. And that's the reason that the study intersections are selected. That kind of represents what kind of impact the development is going to have. And then we use this kind of a growth factor, which is based on their travel demand model for the county and the city, to come up with this one-person growth, which is typically on a much higher side.
As well, I'm guessing he can speak to the question regarding, we first started with one Ingress Egress, then we went to two. What was the, where did that happen?
I can address that.
Okay.
So we've always had two. So there's always been the one main entrance.
Hang on just one second. Mr. Puffer? Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
There's always been one main entrance off of Snowbird. And then the entrance from Four Seasons, that, you can see it says Lumina Lane. That was always, that was always proposed as the emergency vehicle access. So that was there, but the main entrance was going to be from Snowbird. So on Thursday night at the planning commission, Bright Development or city engineers said that, well, they would open up the Lumina Lane, that was the EVA, the emergency vehicle access, to a secondary entry. So now, there were two, there are two entries. So it wasn't that we had one, that we had two, then we went to one, then we went to two. There's always been the main entry with the EVA. And then, at Thursday's meeting, they chose to open up the EVA as a main entry as well.
So it being so close was one of the questions. For Ingress Egress, could that be problematic? And then just go ahead and roll into the VMTs?
That I think I would have to leave up to the engineer.
Please.
So, Joy, there was the emergency vehicle access that Bright is now going to have as a secondary entry. So the question is, if there's, is that going to be problematic as far as the number of VMTs that you're anticipating for the project?
No, the definition of VMT is vehicle miles traveled. So it depends on the number of trips that is coming out of the new development, multiplied by the average length of each trip, right? So the average length of each trip is not going to change, and the total volume of traffic that is coming out of the development is not going to change. So overall, VMT is not going to be impacted whether you have one driveway, two driveway, or multiple driveways from the project site.
Any other questions for the, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to go back to the topic of the higher-density project that's across the street. And I know you, he can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I know you explained that you put into the traffic study, looking at the models and anticipating a 1% growth factor. I'm trying to figure out the best way to formulate my question. The, that area has always been zoned as high-density residential. So in this traffic study, is that already built into your model on how many cars come and go from a high-density residential, and it was sort of, you know, already factored in without the specifics of this particular plan? Hopefully, that makes sense.
Yes. So typically, the model, or the travel demand model, which looks into the future plans of the city and the land uses, that gets incorporated into developing the travel demand model. So if there are high density, then that is coded as the land use and gets included as part of the model. And if it is low-density or commercial, that is also included as part of the land use for the model. So all the developments that are happening in the city or expected to happen within the city, that gets incorporated into the model.
And when you say model, this is a model that is of our specific general plan with the circulation, you know, expectations?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for the engineer? Okay, we'll go ahead and finish with some of the other questions that were asked. There was one about, basically, the small amount of space for a house. So we have some sort of parks close nearby to anticipate this typically, or?
Let me see if I can. I'm sorry. Okay, there we go. So although the lots are smaller, they do have, and the houses are going to fit on the lot, they do have open space that is very similar to what the subdivisions have now. So what we see in our typical single-family is that you have a minimum of a 10-foot rear yard setback. So you have a minimum of a 10-foot backyard. So the, what they're proposing is that 10 to 16 feet. So it's either going to be, it's not going to be any smaller than 10 feet wide, but it could be as wide as 16 feet. And that's to allow for that PUE for TID. So there's going to be some, it's going to be in that range, but it's not going to be any smaller than 10. But that's typical to what our setbacks are in our normal residences. So the setbacks on the sides are five feet, and that's typical for what we have on our single-family subdivisions now. So although the lots are smaller, the setbacks are the same. The density is right in range, what we would want to see, as well as there is an open space. Lot A is also an open space.
Is that a tot lot, then, or?
It's not a tot lot, but it is an open lot, more to help with their drainage, with their water retention. But it's also open space that can be used as a play area for, you know, kids can go out. But it's not going to be designed as a tot lot. I think I'll leave that up to Bright to answer that question, so.
We'll let them work on that and go to a, the next question was about, did we seek to get some sort of a grocery store, anything there for commercial?
Well, the city, the city doesn't develop. So that would be up to the property owner and the developer to come to us to say that they want to develop that site for commercial. The planning department has never received an application to develop that site for commercial use. So Bright Development has owned the property for some time, and this is, you know, they're coming forward with this as a residential project, so.
And just a little plug, Grocery Outlet just opened up pretty nice down there. Let me see. Can't read more than any. So we kind of spoke about it, but just for clarification, how many cars will be permitted per residence?
So there are two-car garages, which is what's required for single-family homes by ordinance. And they do have driveways, as you can see, the little gray areas. So the alleyways, there are alleyways that will lead to their garages that they will have, I believe, if you look in the bottom circle, they've got, I believe, 20-foot driveways, which is our typical, what is our requirement for any single-family home, to have a minimum of a 20-foot driveway. So they're meeting all those requirements, what we would require for any other single-family home. You know, two-car garages, 20-foot driveway. You should park your car in the garage, but we can't, you know, if someone decides to park their car in the driveway, you know, they can do that. So we don't count the driveway as additional parking. It's just required to, when, on a local road, when you see the houses on our local roads, they've got that 20-foot driveway so that they can pull off of the roadway, you know, while their garage door is going up, their car is completely off the roadway before they pull into their garage. So they will have, you know, if I have two cars, I can park in the garage, I can park in the driveway. You know, if my son has another car, you know, then we, as a family, have to figure out what we're going to do at that point, so.
Okay, so it's an HOA, so garbage cans in the front, garbage cans in the back, is there going to be room enough for?
Just like any other subdivision, they will have to, you know, they'll have to wheel their garbage cans out on the street, and then after pickup day, they have to roll back out. So that's going to be, will either be behind their fence or in the garage, but they will have to store them away.
And with them out, will that be problematic for fire, or police, or ambulance, when, I think it's going to be Sunday night they put them out there? So how's that look?
I think I'll leave that up to the fire marshal. But as, you know, there is the travel lane, and then, you know, the, my understanding is that the width of the street is enough for them to get a truck down the roadway, so.
Welcome, Modesto employee.
Hello. How are you tonight?
Doing great. How are you?
Good, thank you. As far as trash cans, so the 20-foot lanes and the alleys, I think, is what you're referring to. Fire code is very specific. We can request no minimum, no less than 20 feet. So, and then it's no parking. So it doesn't really address garbage cans and things like that. Obviously, code enforcement would address any sort of basketballs, hoops that are out there. But when it comes to garbage cans and impacting us, they're lightweight, they're plastic, it's going to be messy, because we might just push them out of the way. But as far as providing for fire safety, they're not a great concern.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, did you write any others down I missed?
They did. The question about entry off of Montevista and Walnut. So
Right.
Montevista and Walnut are classified in our general plan as arterial roads. So that's, what arterials do is they take traffic from expressways, the freeway, as you can see, Montevista goes all the way out to the freeway. They take it into our city and put it onto other local roads and our collectors. The general plan states that we're going to have very minimal entryways and accesses to those, from our arterials. So that's one of the reasons why we, and there's a spacing for that as well. So that's one of the reasons why we would not want to see and would not permit access into the subdivision from Montevista or from Walnut. One of the questions came up about the entry for the apartment complex across the street. So they only have entry onto Walnut, because they can't have entry off of Montevista for the same reason. And then there's already a development on their east side, so they can't have any entry that was a different property line. So they only have one entry in and out, and that's on Walnut, so.
And then I believe it was Mr. Puffer spoke about going through Songbird, or taking out another exit to get out differently?
I believe he's talking about off of Snowbird, right. So they can't go out that way, because there's a house sitting right there.
Emma Ndomi?
Well, I don't know.
Sorry, George. All right, did you guys find that number for us in the back?
About half an acre.
Half an acre. The answer is half an acre, and the question was?
How big of a?
Tot lot, thank you. I'm just spewing stuff I don't even know here. All right.
The, I think the other question was the improvements to Montevista and Walnut.
Correct.
So there will be improvements, not only along Montevista, Walnut, and Four Seasons, and Snowbird. So curb gutter and sidewalk will be required, frontage improvements will be required on all frontages of the project. So the neighbors did say that, you know, the people in Springcrest, the senior citizens in Springcrest do a lot of walking. So the addition of these curbs and gutters and sidewalks, which should make their walking experience a little easier and much safer than walking on the dirt now. So they, those improvements are required as part of the development.
And potentially, should it pass, and say the other side of Walnut were to be done, traffic would be checked again, and if necessary, a stoplight could be placed in?
That I think we, I'd have to defer to the engineering and our traffic engineer.
Mr. Morris is like, who's that?
There is a signal at Walnut, so.
Well, I'm saying, if you had suggested if it were commercial, that we, it'd be up further at Four Seasons.
Well, that was the original traffic study, that when they brought in all of the acres, when they were going to develop that whole area.
So instead of Walnut, in Lua, Walnut?
No. What that traffic study said, because it identified that piece, this piece we're talking about now is commercial. So during that traffic study, it said that, once that commercial piece develops as commercial, it would warrant a stoplight at Four Seasons and Montevista.
Okay.
So what the current traffic study is saying is that it doesn't warrant that stoplight. They are, they're not developing the commercial, they're not developing commercial uses. So, but the median will be extended, and there will be, you know, so they won't be able to turn left coming out of Four Seasons. But they will be able to turn left going into Four Seasons, so.
And we did discuss with schools, they're anticipating a large influx of students?
They're always, they're always routed our projects, and when they comment, they comment, and we didn't hear anything from them. But they are, you know, they...
Okay, guys, what are you thinking? Have a little conversation?
I just wanted to jump in and let you guys, the neighbors and residents of that area, know that I hear you loud and clear, as far as you guys' concerns. I think one thing that kind of stands out to me is, if anything at all possible, I don't know, maybe another kind of exit, is as far as Springcrest goes, when I drove in there myself to kind of check out the area, I feel that it's just going to generate a lot more traffic. And I do understand that if it were to be commercial, it's going to be times four, as far as the traffic goes. But you guys are the ones that live there, so I completely see where you guys are coming from, as far as, you know, you guys have been there for years and dealing with all the traffic. So I just still feel it's a concern as far as maybe adding some other kind of entrance from any other side. I don't know if this, you know, maybe taking down, you know, one of the houses and making some other kind of exit from the opposite end, I don't know if that's possible. I'm not an expert at that, but just, I feel that it's still going to be congested, even though they're adding the second inlet outlet area. But I feel that we do need to take into consideration the neighbors that live there. They've been there for over 15 years or longer. And I just feel that it's still a concern to me as far as the safety going in and out there, and all the added traffic that's going to come with it.
I have a question. If it were commercial, we could even put somebody... If it were commercial, we could even put somebody like in and out there?
Yes.
And what would that traffic look like?
Well, if you look at in and out now, that would probably be very problematic, because they're drive-through. Typical drive-throughs have to be at least 100, the drive-through lane has to be 100 feet away from any residential zoning district. It may be difficult for them to do that, because the smaller pieces zone residential, and you do have, you're surrounded by residential. So it would be how they would be able to fit a drive-through on. But the zoning for community commercial would allow for a drive-through.
And if not this, it could be affordable housing? Somebody else could come back with it?
They can, they would, if they were to develop it for housing, it would still have to go through the same process that it's going through now, a general plan amendment, a rezone, because that one piece of property is zoned for commercial.
Comments, questions, suggestions?
Well, I wanted to just express my thanks to the people who did come out that live in the neighborhood, and provide all of the public comments that we got to read in our packet here, because I do think there was a lot of really thoughtful comments in there, and suggestions that I, in hearing the concerns of, you know, safety, being able to leave the space, and concerns about how the traffic is going to be changed, I feel like the developer has made the concessions and changes that will alleviate some of those. So I'm, I think that this is a good project and a good use of this space.
Is that a motion?
I'll let him comment.
I'd move to approve.
A second.
A motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Pixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
No.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. It passes with a 3-1. Thank you for your time, thank you for coming. Should there be a problem, you can definitely let us know, and we'll make sure that we have traffic out there often to see what's happening. All right, the next item is an action item. And Mr. Possesh, you going to fix a road?
Hold on. Let me fix it.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you tonight is for the approval of an award of bid. And I have a short PowerPoint presentation, and I do mean it. It's very short.
Are you done?
A year ago, the council approved.
Are you done? That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thanks.
A year ago, the council approved the three design task orders for a number of streets to be rehabilitated, and they were grouped under three different city project numbers, 23067, 68, and 69. The projects are all highlighted here in orange. The first one was for Mark Thomas. Okay, so this is the first one for 5.2 miles. I forgot to mention that total is 12.8 miles for all three task orders. We are developing three bid packages under this task order. The next one is for five miles, for Provo and Pritchard, is the design consultant, and we are developing also three bid packages here. The next one is for Siegfried, for 2.6 miles, one bid package here. So we have a total of seven bid packages as a result of the three task orders. The first bid package to be made available for advertisement was 23068, bid package one, which is primarily the Donnelly Park area plus Meadowlark Drive. And these are the streets that are included in that bid package. We advertised the bid package on December 20th, opened bids on the 23rd of January. We had six bids, which are tabulated here. We analyzed the bids and determined that United Pavement Maintenance, Inc. was the lowest responsible, responsive bidder, and their bid was $204,000 under the engineer's estimate. So we have a resolution before you to determine the award of bid is exempt from CEQA, award the bid, and approve an agreement with United Pavement Maintenance, Inc. for the bid amount plus a contingency of 10% or $167,000. Any questions?
Do you need it right now?
Anytime would be.
Isaac, you got any money? Okay. Any questions for him? Okay, well, open it to public, anyone wishing to speak on this? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back. Is that a motion?
Just a comment first. So it's always great when you come here and bring your expertise on, here's all the different things that are happening in the Very Active Roads program. And, you know, because we're putting forth such financial resources to do this, I know that there was a presentation back in March of last year, and then June some. I don't exactly know what was discussed, March versus June, but I hope that we can continue to have kind of those regular updates. And I think, you know, in those presentations, there's these great maps that you bring to us. I would love to see it if we could really compile all of that, so we can communicate to the city, we've done, we've made this progress, and maybe, you know, throw out there the things that you're thinking of and toying with for, you know, what the next three years of projects are going to look like. So I hope that we can communicate all the good work that you're doing and the Roads program is doing. And with that, I will move to approve this item tonight.
So.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Pixel?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes.
Pass the 4-0. Thank you, Mr. Possesh.
Thank you.
All right, now we have city manager updates. Mr. Wilson?
Just want to note to the council that, starting tonight, we're keeping track of those questions that aren't answered. We're putting a spreadsheet together, and in future council meetings, it'll be a part of your agenda package.
Okay, so the public can just get it online in the?
It'll be a part of the city's website.
Okay. And in the packet itself, so it'll be under, like, city managers update stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you.
That's all I got.
All right, council member comments and announcements and future consideration? Nothing. Holy smokes.
I did want to share my experience during the point-in-time census for the homeless here in town. The men and women that I saw out there and I spoke to, they were arranged from like 20s to 50s and 60s. It was, it's very unfortunate, they, you know, one of the questions that we have to ask them is if they were, you know, offered help, and sadly, they decline, because they either have some kind of, you know, drug or alcohol problem, and so. But it's just kind of interesting to see, you know, from, you know, I experienced it for myself, what they're out there in, you know, their addictions are. One thing that came in, as far as a question, and I don't know if this is something, if there's the local services that are here in town, if there's some kind of outreach, I don't know if there is, or if there is, if there's like a report that is done with the people that work, you know, let's say at We Care or, you know, Gospel Mission, are they going out there and maybe talking to these people, and maybe trying to help them get off the streets? If that's something that could happen, I'd like to get that report.
The chief has, works with the probation department, they have a care team, and so he can kind of show you, you could ride along and see what they do. Yeah. All right, there is a big deal softball. CSU-Stanslos has it every year, and people from Canada, Hawaii, all this, Oregon, Dr. Milton Richards, why haven't he started it? But it will be this weekend, Friday through Sunday, at Padretti, weather permitting, I'm sure. Also want us to look at what we're going to do with fire. We need to pooper it off the pot, we need to decide what we're going to do, if we're going to do something, we're kind of sitting here waiting for numbers, and we need to plan. So I hope that we can get that on the agenda soon and have a discussion, whatever that looks like. Other than that, we have closed session.
Yes, we have 14A, threat to public services or facilities. California Government Code 54957A, with consultation with the Chief head in Charlestown Police Department. We have 14B, conference with labor negotiator. There's California Government Code 54957.6A, agency designated representative, City Manager Regan Wilson. Employee organization is Charlestown Firefighters Association, Local 2434. NC, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, California Government Code 549569D, two potential cases, two.
All right, we will report out, should there be something. Otherwise, we'll see you in a couple weeks, I think it's the 25th.
All right, we will report out should there be something. Otherwise, we'll see you in a couple weeks, I think it's the 25th.
...
All right, we are back. We have nothing to announce and good night.